Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September the 22nd, meeting for the City Council in the city of Lamar. My name is Kirk Cressman, the mayor. A lot of different things happening today. Today, we ticked off our first round of interviews with the three remaining candidates for our city administrator search. We do have the three individuals here tonight, so we want to welcome them tonight as a visit and also join in or participate by listening to how the council interacts and how we work. A lot of other things that are happening over the last few weeks. We had a wonderful 9/11 tribute. Doug Harvard did a wonderful job on coordinating those events, as well as the dedication of the memorial site and the new addition of the new statue there. So I also want to give a shout out and thank Doug for all of his hard work on that project in that weekend. I know it's a huge undertaking for him, so we really appreciate everything that he's done. With that in mind, we're going to start off with the invocation. We have Christine Walker. Pastor Walker?
Let us pray. As we come to this place where decisions are made and community is moved forward in vision and in purpose, let us take time and intention in discerning, have patience with one another, and be intentional in word and deed and follow them. In this time, let our work show well for this city and community as a whole. Amen.
Councilman Temez, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:03 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Shay Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Cressman.
Here.
David Zavala.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Brett Bates.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Were there any changes that needed to be made on the agenda, or are we ready to go with that?
Ready to go, Mayor.
I do not see any changes either, so we'll pursue the consent agenda. Next item on the agenda. We do have an item, is that right, Jerry?
Yes.
And what is that?
It's to Gonzalez Unlimited and the amount of $936.70 that we need to go down separately.
Is it? It's $999.53, isn't it?
Oh, I see.
Oh, okay. Okay. That was, do you have a check number for that? Or is there a different number? Because I had $999, well, there's $53.
Oh, okay, the $62.83.
Yes.
And the $93.
So that's, so they're added together.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, so we will vote on that separately.
Check number 103140.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Check number 103140.
103140.
Yes.
So is that a motion to approve that check separately?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. Now we need a motion for our consent agenda submitted with check number 1045, or check number 103140 removed. Do we have a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
We have voted on consent agenda. Good check.
That's okay. So we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify with an aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Joe abstained.
Unanimous in favor of Councilman Gonzalez abstaining.
Okay. Will that work?
Sure.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is a public comment portion of this meeting. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council? Okay, we do have an individual. You'll need to come up to the podium and give your name and address for the records.
My name is Timothy Earhart. My address is 907 South 8th Apartment 3. And what I'd like questions about is, is there any news on when we could actually expect a council's, what is it called, statement, I believe, about all the changes in the police department, among other things? I just feel that the people deserve to know why so many of the officers got replaced and stuff like that. Also, we, I think it would be proper to include the parts of the two families that wrote, run the drugs in this town. Is there any actions going to be taken against them, or is there any plan to deal with that? After all, drugs in this town is a problem. So I was hoping to get the council's statements on that, if possible, at a later date.
Okay. So those were your three requests?
Yeah, because I know the last time the police department had such a turnover was 2000, 2001 era, and that was never actually known by the public as to why. So in the agreement of full public disclosure, I think it would only be proper that we get answers. After all, that much of a change in the police department and everything else going on, a little bit of show of how you plan to go forward would probably put minds at ease.
All right. Is there anything else?
None.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the city treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As far as the grants update, we have been working on finishing up the taxiway aid grant through the FAA and the state Department of Transportation, getting that finalized and getting everything completed on it. Working on the Brownsville grant and then also starting some budget and stuff for the cleanup grant through the Brownsville grant, the EPA grant. So those are some of the items that Tess has been working on, on the grants. And then as far as Tyler goes, we're done with configuration. Have a few meetings this week with them to finish that up. We had three solid weeks of working every day on it, Thomas and I did. So the configuration is complete. We're going to do a data pull on October 1st after the payroll is complete. We'll run a dual payroll on the middle payroll of the month, I believe it's the 15th, and then we'll run our first payroll in Tyler on the 29th, the last payroll in October. So we are moving forward with that. And then we have utility billing starting the first week in November. We'll start configuration on that, so, and go live with it November and December. So that's my Tyler update.
Solid training been kept up to date with that?
You know, they're doing, the staff has been wonderful. You know, we've had a few bumps and things here that we've needed to, you know, get lined out, but Thomas and Bryce have been wonderful and the staff has been wonderful and supportive, and we've had really good feedback. And I think everybody's really honestly starting to like it. It's so much more efficient and easy to use, but, you know, we still have a few things to work out, but I think that everybody is doing a wonderful job. It's just, we have, we have great people, so.
Okay.
That's all I had, Kirk, unless anybody has questions for me.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
All right. So that would be the city treasurer's report. Next up would be the city clerk's report. Linda?
And I have no report this evening unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. Any questions for Linda? All right. Moving on to the city administrators' report by the interim city administrators, both me and Manuel. Manuel, I'll let you start.
Sure. Coming, upcoming events, the meet and greet with the city administrator finalists will be tomorrow evening from 5 to 8 at the tavern under the pergola there. Powers Medical Center Community Carnival is Thursday, September 25th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the LCC Wellness Center. The annual appreciation barbecue at Big Timbers Museum will be Thursday, September 25th, from 5 till 7. It's $2.50 per person or $5 for a family. If you've got a big family, it sounds like a good deal. The fourth annual Lahana Tarantula Fest happening Saturday, September 27th, downtown Lahana, from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Common Grounds is Wednesday, October 1st, at 7:00 AM in the Cultural Event Center. The Common Grounds is for the city to highlight one of their departments and also to invite the community to come and participate. You're welcome to have a cup of coffee with us, discuss issues, anything, you know, and so really it's designed to meet with the mayor, some of the city council members, administrators, and really just have some open dialogue there outside of a council meeting. And so we always want to promote that well. Oktoberfest, Lamar Chamber, Saturday, October 4th, at the Chamber of Commerce at 11:00 AM. They're going to have multiple events and vendors present. Please visit the Lamar Chamber for more details.
I'll sneak in for a minute to talk about an HR update. We do have some employees in the city of Lamar who are celebrating some service milestones for July through September. We also want to, you know, not only just mention them, but commend them for their service to the community. Braxton Warren, who is an electrical technician at Lamar Light &amp; Power, was hired on August the 10th of 2015, so this is his 10 years of service. We have Marvin Leatherman, a control room operator at Lamar Light &amp; Power. This is his 15 years of service. For 20 years of service, we have our own Linda Williams, our city clerk, yay, who was hired on September the 12th of 2005, so that's 20 years worth of joy and interextinction. We have Sherry Earhart, a library associate in the library, who was hired in May, the 10th of 2010 as well. But she previously worked for the city of Lamar back in 2000 to 2005, so the total years of service to the city of Lamar was 20 years. The next one that we have is Ted Vasquez. Get this one. This is just amazing. He was hired in 2000, but he had worked before, from 1981 to 2000, so he has a total service of 44 years to the city of Lamar.
Wow.
So great job, Ted Vasquez. He is just one of those people that we really appreciate everything that he does. Thank you.
A few department updates. In committee development, planning and zoning commission approved revisions on Chapter 30 at its meeting last week, so the ordinance will go to the city council for the first and second readings for possible approval. Lamar's building department fully staffed. Tony Grotta is our new hire, and Joy Dashner, Assistant Building Inspector, and so we're looking at them getting up to speed with all of the ongoing projects. In IT, the camera system at the welcome center, equipment came in, and so they're scheduling with Light &amp; Power to get the power pole installed with Tyler. They're getting their payroll switched over with, which Kristen already mentioned. The fire department, they are on standby for football season, so that has started. And they're working with the new building inspector on training and building inspections. HR Wellness Fair is taking place, the community resource and senior center, Tuesday, September 23rd and Wednesday, September 24th, 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. For Parks and Rec, Fall Recreation League sports have started for the season. Archery range is almost complete, looking to do a soft open soon, and then do a grand opening in the spring with vendors present. For the police department, the new code enforcement officer position has been filled. This will help with the overwhelming amount of dog at large violations and calls we currently have. We should get initial report for traffic study by the 26th. And for the library, trunk or treat is Friday, October 31st, in the parking lot behind the library, from 5 to 7:00 PM, and they are working on planning Christmas events.
So the staff are very busy. Thank you, Manuel. Next item on the agenda is reports and correspondence from the council. We'll start off with Joe.
Okay. On the golf board side, they did have their meeting I was able to attend. They had mentioned that there was several pieces of equipment that had some breakdowns. Their newest tractor that they had bought, the PTO, broke on it, so they had to get it fixed. Bunch of motors and pumps, the seals are burning out on them, and they're, Sean mentioned that they have enough to keep going for the rest of the year, but he's going to have to take a lot to Garden City to get them fixed. Their fleet of golf carts are in good condition. They had a few that needed some tires replaced and some batters replaced, and they are asking all those who rent sheds that they get insurance on their golf carts. They'd purchased new range bowls. They're getting rid of their old ones, which I'm in favor of, thank goodness. The greens have recently been cut and top dressed, and they had a bunch of volunteers come out for that. And they had a short visit about their handicap flags. There was just an increase of misuse on how the guys that have handicap flags on their golf carts, they're just misusing that flag. So they're going to come with some ideas on how they can use that. They're going to revamp that area right there, their policies. And I had mentioned this last time during one of our meetings here on the updates with the lighting on the interior of the golf board or the pro shop right there. Right now, they're working on an agreement with Evergreen to trade out him doing the lights, and they would do some advertising for him out there. And on the golf tournament side, the LCC Running Loops had finished second in their Eastern Wyoming Golf Tournament, and right after that, they were to be headed to McCook to play a tournament up there. And we got the two-shot golf tournament coming up this weekend, and if you don't mind, I'd like to cue Brenton on this because he's part of that committee there, and they've done such a fabulous job on that, and he can give you all the details and times of what's happening out there.
Thanks, Joe. So we added some interesting events this year. The tournament itself has stayed the same, but in hopes of bringing out more of the community to enjoy the event like they had in decades past, we created the all-new birdie bar, which will be in the spectator zone just to the west of the hill from Old Five. We've got a long drive competition, a glow-in-the-dark long drive competition on Saturday evening. You can win a brand-new tailor-made driver. We have a putting contest with a full nine-hole mini putt course on the buddy green, where you can win a brand-new Scotty Cameron putter. Really good favors that we were able to get from a Colorado local company, some head covers, some ball markers, and stuff like that. We have 40 teams as of today at registration close, so 80 participants. The birdie bar and spectator zone is open to the public, 10 to 6 on Saturday, the 27th, this coming Saturday, and 10 to tournament close on Sunday. The mini-games are also open to the public, the putting contest and the long drive competition. So we're really excited for some of these changes. We do have some new board members with a lot of new energy and momentum, and we're working on a lot of things. You mentioned policies, some collaboration with the Elks up above, working through that. So a lot of good things happening. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. Yes, they haven't come to an agreement yet with the upstairs yet, but they're, I feel good about it now with this new board presence, that they're going to come to an agreement with the upstairs, and they'll be able to pursue business as usual. They've got another tournament coming up, which will be the Rankin Memorial Scholarship Tournament. I believe that will be October the 4th, when they start kicking that off right there. And that would be it for the golf board side. Now, I had the chance to attend Pep today. They are still working on their storefront signage. I had mentioned that last time that they're looking to do some signage work on their front storefront right there. They just got vendors that are just dragging their feet, getting slow, so they got tabled again until sometime. They've got a career fair still coming up, which is scheduled next month, so if you know of any businesses that would like to present themselves over there at their fair, please get in contact with some Pep. They're visiting about their VIP social for October the 4th at the tavern. Lisa Slosserhausen is no longer helping them with grant writing. She is moving. This is pretty exciting, and shout out to Pep for this. Shamrock Holmes is under contract for some land behind JR's bottle shop, and I'm assuming that there'll be more to come with that, so that's going to be some great development going on right there. They did some online spotlights for some new businesses, two businesses that they did some spotlighting on, some online work there with Little Patch on the Prairie, and Colorado QuikTrip for some, two new businesses that started up. The CSU Extension plans to remodel the Boncarols Club for more office space, and they had a visitor, Don Philbeck, come in to discuss his concerns about projects, and Charlie is going to be visiting with us tonight about a few things and give us her spiel, and it's always a great pleasure to go down there to that meeting. And that's about it. That's what I have.
Okay. All right, Shaylon?
So Main Street Lamar met recently and went over kind of a list of some proposed projects that they want to look into a little bit further, from a community Christmas tree to some updates at the Enchanted Forest, and like I said, they're just researching those at this point. They also went over some survey results that they did about Lamar's Main Street and looking what the people really want to do there. The Corporate Cup that they had recently held went off very well, and they did a survey about that as well to see what improvements could be made, and so looking at timing of events to make them not so hot part of the days and things like that. There was also a visitor there, sorry, a visitor there from DOLA, and spoke, they spoke about some of the grant opportunities available and how they're kind of restructured now with the federal funding.
Okay. Jerry?
We met with Public Safety. We didn't have a full forum there, so we did discuss about doing Neighborhood Watch. We're still talking about that, and Mike's going to get with the chief and figure out which neighborhoods or see who would like to get involved in doing the Neighborhood Watch, and then Kristen is going to help us with grants. That's my update.
Okay. David?
I don't have anything at the moment, but I'll just mention, we did have that meeting on the P&amp;Z on the 17th, and Manuel just mentioned what was going on with Chapter 30 and moving forward with that, and it looks like it's going to be good.
Okay.
Manuel? Waterboard did meet, and Robbie gave us a report on the levels of the wells, and we are sitting in a better position than we were last year at this time, and he reported that actually we're in a three-year upward trend, and so it's been trending up in the last three years, and he's actually talked about getting us a report that goes back a little bit further, so that way we can get a better picture of just where our water levels are and where they've been in the past. And then Pat brought in an article on the Art Valley Conduit and shared with us that in that article, Representative Lauren Bober is testifying in favor of finishing that project, and so she is pushing to get that completed, and so that's a good, a good sign.
Airport Board did not meet. They did not have a quorum, and then appeals and, yeah, appeals and adjustments meets Wednesday night, and as I mentioned a few months ago, this will be the last month that I have that conflict of interest, so October I will start going to that adjustment appeals board.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. I don't have anything myself. I will be meeting with Powers Medical Center next week. Actually, she had already canceled that. She had a conference to go to, but I'll give an update on the next meeting. Moving forward...
I'd like to clarify real quick, a scheduling conflict, not a conflict of interest.
Scheduling conflict.
Sorry about that. It's been a long Monday.
Yeah. All right. We'll move on to the agenda. Number, number one was a discussion with Powers Economic Prosperity. We do have a visitor here tonight that would like to speak to us from Pep. Charlie Farben.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for letting me come in. Okay, so I'm going to give you just a quick little overview of what we've been doing. I know one of the things that Powers Economic Prosperity would really, has been really wanting to do is get in front of you guys and give you updates, and now that I have an extra staff member, I'm finally head above water and can help do that. So we did hire a new staff member in June. Brent Bates is our new project assistant, and so since then, it's allowed me to kind of free up some of my time and not be so stuck on certain things that probably don't have as much importance as others. So adding him on has been absolutely wonderful, but again, I want to thank you guys a lot for letting us come in and kind of chat with you and putting us on your agenda. But I wanted to give you just a brief update of things that we've been kind of doing here and there, and just so you know what Pep does. So one of the things that, and it's not high on our list, but it's extremely important to us, is our stakeholder meetings. So we have a ton of monthly meetings that we attend between the two of us and some of our board members. Just a few to go over, SECED, we participate in all of the SECED meetings, all of the CCOG meetings, the TPR meetings, the SECRAHA, so the Regional Housing Authority now, our SEBRIA, so our regional business retention, expansion, and attraction, which is the entire region, so it's really cool to get the whole region in the room. All of our Pep working committees, so we have BEAR, which is Business Expansion, Attraction, and Retention. We have our executive meetings, and we have a very active workforce development committee. Our Wiley Steering Committee, so we're in Wiley once a month. Holly Commercial Club, we're in Holly once a month. Of course, one of us is always sitting in on the airport board for City of Lamar, Main Street Lamar, and then regionally, we also have an Economic Developers Weekly meeting, and so all of us economic developers meet weekly to chat back and forth, figure out what our struggles are, different things like that, but we have a very good working relationship together. So the gist of this that we're trying to say is extremely important is, you know, just making those connections and being that resource hub that we know what's going on. The second thing that we do a lot of is a technical assistance and conduit services, so anywhere from startup businesses to existing businesses, we provide those resources to the local businesses, and we kind of help them navigate all the changes that come in the business world. So this year, to this point, we have provided technical assistance to 43 businesses, which we feel like is pretty darn good. And then one of the other things we're really heavily involved in, and especially this year, every five years, we do a statewide and regional SEDS report. So the SEDS report is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategies Report, very similar to a comprehensive plan for economic development. So, you know, setting goals, different things that we want to see coming, but we reach out to the communities and we make sure that they have their projects on this list. So whether that be infrastructure, whether it just be these big in-the-sky dreams that these communities have, we work hand-in-hand with them and make sure that they're on this report, so if funding is available, we can bring that to them. As you guys know with comprehensive plans, it's extremely important to make sure those projects are on there, so that's what we've been working really hard on. And this year, the economic developers have taken the helm of that due to losing a couple employees at our large regional economic development level, so that is something that we have been heavily involved in. We have our business enhancement program, so we offer a $1,000 reimbursable grant to any businesses in Powers County for their facade improvement. So anything on the front of their building that's going to be permanent, lighting, you know, paint, all the above. They submit those applications to us between January and March, and then we approve them, and then they have until December to finish them. So last year, we approved eight applications, approved and funded eight applications, so we had eight businesses finalize those. This year, we have approved nine applications so far, so we're on the up and out, and you can tell, you see them on, you know, Main Street, and we've had a few down in Holly, and so it's really exciting to see those businesses kind of come to life. And then the last thing I want to hit on, just for the director's report... And then the last thing I want to hit on, just for the Director's Report, part of this, we have incentives that we approve every year. Quarterly is what we try to improve, you know, and approve these incentives. But we recently approved one for Turidian Agrico, and they're an environmentally controlled calf development facility. They're featuring the new state-of-the-art technology, and they have come together and reconstructed a swine farm and turned it into a calf, a now calving facility. And so we want to invite you guys out. We are doing a tour and a incentive presentation to them on Thursday. So you guys are welcome to come. Let me know if you need any information. I've got an invite on there for you. And then if you flip over to the back, so these are just some of the little projects that we do, and I say little, but, you know, they hit on a big scale sometimes, are, I know Joe mentioned our Career Fair. It's our third annual. That'll be October 8th, and it starts at 9:00 AM and runs till 3:30. 9:00 AM to 11:30, we are running just a, an open session where businesses can come in and talk to not only high school students, but we've opened it up to college students as well as adults. So if there's any adults out there that are looking for a job, looking to get into a different career, please come out and join us. But if you guys know of any businesses or, you know, want to put your businesses out there, please get in contact with us. Our Workforce Development Committee puts that together every year, which consists of Lamar Community College, Pep, the Cornerstone Resource Center, the Workforce Center, and the Small Business Development Center. So we do have our VIP social coming up, October 14th. It'll be 5:30 at the Cow Palace. This is our way to get out to some of the businesses that maybe don't know what we're doing or what Pep does in general. So we have invitations available, and they can come and learn about Pep or if they want to become a contributor, we're happy to, you know, talk to them through, talk them through that as well. One of the things we want to hit on that I know a lot of the general public doesn't know, our contributions, whether it be monetary or in-kind, qualify for Enterprise Zone tax credits. So I know sometimes that's big to some of the smaller businesses, and so that's something we really wanted to hit on. Moving forward into Spotlight Programs, so we just wrapped up, well, we wrapped up our second year of business spotlights, just in general for businesses. But now that we have an extra staff member, he's taken on doing our first year of member and startup business spotlight. So it's been really cool that we can add that aspect to it because it helps with some of those businesses that are coming in, that they feel like they're important to. So we've started that up, and if you guys want any of that information, we keep it on our Facebook page very steadily. We're working to update our website so that everything will be on there. So yeah, check those out because there's some really cool businesses in town that, you know, sometimes we overlook. So economic development, one of the things that we've been working really hard on is how, how do we change our view of what we're doing in economic development to kind of pair what's going on at the time? I know sometimes we get complacent in what we're doing, and we've kind of wanted to change our direction a little bit. So this year, we're starting to kick off the introduction of our shovel-ready program. Our first commercial development is under contract, as Joe stated, and we're using this first commercial project to really develop Pep's shovel-ready program. So this is the introduction of our project repository. We want to become that repository that will really serve as a one-stop-shop for people so they know where to go. If they have any questions on anything, you know, whether it come to the planning and zoning, the protocols, we can help be that middle man, and they're not so stressed out because I think that's a big issue that we seem to have is sometimes it's like, who do I talk to? So what we're really trying to do is help them kind of navigate that so it's not so stressful. And then we do have a five-year goal to have 100-plus acres developed through this shovel-ready program and this project repository in hopes that we can really show businesses, hey, we are here, we're here, we're open, we're ready. And so that's kind of our plan. It's been a lot of feet on the ground and a lot of long days, but we've been working really hard at it. Brent's been working really hard at it. And so that's kind of something that we've, we really wanted to change our direction on. So wanted to get that in front of you guys. And then the last thing I want to do, Pep would like to request a work session with you guys for next Monday, September 29th, if at all possible. We would like to formally present to you our shovel-ready program. I know this is a very brief overview of what the program is, but we want to talk to you a little bit more in depth, and maybe if you guys have any questions, help navigate those questions, anything like that, just so we can kind of discuss this, this program's capacity needs. And then, of course, we want to chat with you guys about your annual contribution. So, thank you guys again for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is an update from Ports to Plains. For Ports to Plains, Mike Duffy is our liaison to the Ports to Plains Coalition. Mike, I'll turn this over.
Thank you very much, City Council, for allowing me to kind of bring you up to date. I, I'm getting ready to head out to Lubbock, Texas next Monday for a, for our annual fall conference for Ports to Plains. And this is kind of an exciting little networking event. The theme this, this year is Interstate Advantage Highway 27. And if you follow in the news and you've been down to Texas, West Texas here lately, Interstate Highway 27 is basically in the Lubbock area up to about, not quite Amarillo. But the plan is to kind of make that interstate come up through eastern Colorado. Lamar, a big state, we've got a lot of work to do, working with CDOT, trying to make that plan a reality, maybe a few years out, but everything takes time. A lot of, lot of interesting sessions in this. I plan on heading down there early enough to where I can kind of explore some of the towns through Texas. For instance, a lot of people bring up to me the idea of the reliever route around Boise City. It's the first time I've been down to Texas since they put that one in, so I want to see it firsthand. Looking at that map, I know there's other reliever routes, like I think it's Tulio, Tula? I can't pronounce that. Maybe you can help me out, Brent. Texas, yeah. But, you know, looking at the map, there's a lot of reliever routes around cities, and I kind of want to kind of take a look at that between, as, as I travel down to Lubbock and kind of get a, a better idea. As we know, back in 2013, this was on the table. We did an environmental assessment back then. The design was to go around the east side of Lamar. The remnants of it is down, I think it's called County Road GG, which goes from 287 over here to just east of Walmart, was the initial plans on that. You know, one of the things we need to do, depending on how the funding goes and the federal government, we're looking at doing another environmental assessment to take a look at that, seeing it's been close to, what is it, 10, 12 years since we've done that? If my math's correct on that one. But that's, that's one of the things, working with Congressman Boebert and all of the congressmen to try to get funding for an environmental assessment update on that. A lot of things on the plate there. I just kind of open it up. If anybody's got any suggestions or anything, one of the other things I've been kind of working on and staying in touch with is going to the quarterly TPR meetings that are held over at CSED, and that kind of helps us stay in touch with CDOT and what CDOT's doing accordingly. So if any of you council people have any questions or any suggestions for me, I would welcome those.
Anybody else?
We'll just be looking for a good report when you get back.
I plan on, on doing that as well and giving you a, a post-report on that. And, you know, in essence, I think, you know, everybody knows the, the, the volume of traffic trucks particularly has grown since that first environmental assessment has taken place back in 2013. If anybody does business downtown, I, I feel for the businesses because, you know, sometimes they, they don't want to lose that traffic, but then I think it's a big economic boon to, to do something about the truck traffic specifically. It's truck after truck. I've had a number of businesses that come to me and going, we can stand there and look out our window and see truck after truck after truck after truck. And, you know, so the, the big thing is I really want to boost economic development following in the Pep report that was just previously here. We're all working together to, to make a better Lamar. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, moving right along, we do have the appointment to the Lamar Tree Board. Joyce Reed's term expired on March 1st of 2025. This created a vacancy. It was advertised as directed. Two applicants were received for this position, and the board has reviewed both applicants. They have voted to appoint the applicant that they interned, that turned in their application first. So the person who they are recommending is Shawna Rae Falconburg. So the Chair, the Chairman or the Chairperson of the Board has requested for us to consider appointing Shawna Rae Falconburg to the Lamar Tree Board for this term. And this is a term that'll expire March 1st of 2028. Now, I don't know if she's thought about this, but if she does become on the council, does get elected on the council, does she have to give up this?
She'd have to resign.
Yeah, because she would have to do that, so.
And then that board would be back open up again.
Right.
Hopefully the second applicant would be willing to take that position.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up and let them know.
Who's currently the liaison to the Tree Board? You?
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, even with that in mind, we still need to fill the position now, so.
I move to accept the Lamar Tree Board's recommendation to appoint Shawna Rae Falconburg to fill the three-year term expiring on March 1st of 28.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Moving along to the next item on the agenda, John Henry Eldred Jr. Foundation, a grant for up to $5,000. This is initiated by Sue Lethrup for the Library Board, or the Library. Sue, would you like to speak on this tonight?
Yes, I'm here to request approval so that I can apply for this grant. This grant is from a foundation that is based in Ohio, and they typically only give grants to their, in their region. However, the, the, John Henry Eldred was a owner of a booktape place, and he loves rural libraries. So every year, they also choose libraries throughout the country to give grants of $5,000 to. You apply for the grant, and they're 95% likely, if you have been invited, which we have, they're 95% likely to give you those funds. They do not require a match. Basically, we just need to tell them what we're going to spend it on, and they want us to spend it in the children's area. So I'm working with the children's librarian to find out what our biggest needs are, which at this time appear to be some furniture, a Lego table, and materials, of course. We always need materials. So I would like approval to apply for this grant.
Okay. Counsel?
I'd like to make a motion to give them permission to apply for the grant.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any final discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. All right, agenda item number five, permission to apply for the T-Mobile Grant. This is initiated by Kristen Schwartz and Brenda May. Will you be speaking on this, Kristen?
Yes, sir. Okay, so Brenda brought this information to Tess and I that she had been told about this grant opportunity from her Main Street contacts. And so Main Street America communities can apply for this grant up to $50,000 with no required match. The projects must be complete within 12 months after being awarded. So the staff intends to apply for a $49,300 revitalization of the Enchanted Forest Grant. So this would include the finishing up the stage and modifying it and getting, I believe, a cover over it, framing, lighting, signage, and some seating improvements in the Enchanted Forest. So we're just asking counsel for permission to apply to this T-Mobile Grant and allow the mayor to sign the application if necessary and the grant agreement if awarded.
Okay. Counsel?
I'd like to make a motion to allow staff to apply for the T-Mobile Grant. Second. And allow the mayor to sign. I'm still second.
Okay. All right, any final discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Keep them moving on. Permission to apply for the EPA Brownsville Assessment Grant. This was initiated by Emery Crampton as well as Kristen and Tess.
So we're just asking for permission to apply for the next round of assessment grants through EPA. We've had very successful relationships with them and grants over the past years. So we'd like to apply for $500,000, which it doesn't require a match. We've had some really good discussions with the EPA. We've got, of course, them with the cleanup grant, and we're finishing up our assessment grant right now. So we'd like just for permission to go ahead and pursue this grant opportunity through the EPA and, and start working on, on getting that application complete. So we're just asking for permission to apply.
Okay.
Make a motion to allow staff to apply for the EPA Brownsville Assessment Grant and allow the mayor to sign.
So. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I don't have any.
All right, saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, Oktoberfest Permit Request. This was initiated by interim Chief Ritter, who's in full combat mode. He's down.
That's right. Yeah, so this is, we've already reviewed the special permit, and this is a permit that's been requested several years. It's for a couple of road closures in Beach in front of the event, and it's typical. We've had it for several, several years. Have no objections, questions, or concerns in regards to this, sir.
Okay, so it would just be covering Beach Street, basically, and then that side street?
Yep, the entrance side street in the front of Beach Street, just in front of the Enchanted Forest area.
The only concern that we had last year was some of the Tesla chargers were being blocked, and we needed to make sure that somebody from the chamber was able to keep an eye on that for when cars arrive and are able to make access for those chargers.
Okay.
So I would, I would ask that we add that in with their approval, that they need to ensure that those are available for both chargers. There's also the chargers inside the area that they can use as well.
We'll make that notification.
Any other comments from the council?
I don't have any.
Do we have a motion?
I'm going to approve the Oktoberfest Permit Request. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, next item on the agenda is application for the Victims Assistance and Law Enforcement Bail Grant for 2026. This is also by interim Chief Ritter.
Yeah, this is a, another, something else that we've applied for, for at least, I believe, 10 to 15 years. It provides some salary for the administration of the Vail Assistance Fund, which is to assist for crime victims, to allow them to understand what's going on through the process, provide access to resources, and in some cases, financial compensation. We've requested a slight amount more this year, and that's to cover some Sane exams or sex assault nurse evaluation exams. And sometimes we don't know how many of those we're going to have, and generally, we've just covered them out of the investigations budget. But the only difference is, is this year is that we have requested for, I think, three, accounting for approximately $3,000 additional dollars. They're approximately $1,000 apiece, so that's the only additional request. For this grant that we have again received since at least 2015, and Colleen, administrative assistant, is the administrator for this grant. And again, this will be numerous, numerous years that she's prepared this grant and functioned with, also in conjunction with the district attorney's office.
Okay. I was just looking at the grant request and some of the documentation. Did anybody have any questions?
I don't have any.
Okay.
I moved authorized Lamar Police Department to apply for the Vail Grant for 2026 and allow them- the mayor to sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Saying no other questions or discussion, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is to approve the CHP quotes for funding of the health and dental insurance premiums for 2026. Margaret couldn't be here tonight, so her supervisor will be reviewing that.
Yes. So we got our annual quote in for our health, dental, and vision for 2026. We were actually pleased we got only a 6.65 increase for the health, and it wound up being, I think, an 8.5 in dental and a 3.5 in vision. But overall, we were pleased. I had originally budgeted a 10% increase, so I had gone in after I got this news and adjusted that. So it does save the city money. So we're just asking council to accept the quote without any changes to our coverages that we're offering, the interim options that we're offering to the employees, so we keep the same options for them, the low deductible and the high deductible plans, with the city paying 75% of anything that they add. So we were, and the vision is employee-paid only, so that isn't a cost to the city.
Okay. Counsel, any questions?
I don't have any.
And we'd also need permission for the mayor to sign, accepting the quote.
I make a motion to accept the quote and authorize the mayor to sign.
A second.
In the seconds, good?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Next item is to accept SIRS's 2026 Property Casualty Preliminary Contribution Quote. Also, Kristen, also speak on this.
Yes, we got our quotes in for our property and casualty, casualty coverage from SIRS. It was a 5.42% increase, so it went from 810,443 to 848,773, which includes the entire city, including light and power. So that does get spread across. Again, 5.42 was under the, really the standard of what other entities were getting, so we were pleased with no more than a 5%, 5.42% increase. So we're asking the same, that the, accepting the quotes for those coverages and allowing the mayor to sign the, the document, accepting.
So we need a motion on the recommendation?
Then we didn't, yes, we just need a motion on accepting the quote and allowing the mayor to sign the quotation document. And we didn't change any of the deductibles or anything from last year. So this is the same coverage that we got last year.
Make a motion to accept the renewal quote and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Moving right along, we have the, except SIRS's 2026 Workers' Compensation Preliminary Contribution Quote. Kristen?
This one is, is the same thing. We got our quote from SIRS for our workers' comp coverage for the city. It's not as pretty. We did get a 23% increase on our workers' comp. It went from 190,495 to 247,701. I had a meeting with Margaret and the representative from SIRS, and it was due to our salary increases, Parks and Rec and police being the two departments that had the largest increases. And it did, so it, they base it on your salary amount. So that was the reason for the significant increase on that. So if we were going to have an increase on one, it would be this one. It's a lot cheaper than $800,000, so.
Yeah.
But I'm, we're just asking the same thing, to accept the quotation and allow the mayor to sign the document.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the renewal quote, authorize the mayor to sign.
It hurts, but I second.
I have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Do we have any miscellaneous that we need to discuss?
I've got a question. Are we, have we sent out any letters or are we moving in the direction with DZ construction?
In the process.
In the process. Okay, thank you.
It has been submitted already, so it's moving forward. Okay?
That's all I have.
All right. I do have a request of Chief Ritter, interim Chief Ritter. The next meeting, you were going to be giving us an update on the police department, is that correct? And some of the things you're working on, is that correct?
Yes, in regards to additional traffic speeding, I think they complete data, they have a complete investigation.
Okay. On that, I took some notes of the requested items that were requested, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll get with you afterwards, and we can make sure you address those during your presentation as well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any other items from the council for miscellaneous?
I don't have any.
Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda will be an executive session. We have two executive sessions, in fact. One for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under Colorado Revised Statutes 246402 subsection 4 subsection E regarding the police chief search. Also, we will be having the exact same executive session for negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, or instructing negotiators under Colorado Revised Statutes 246402 subsection 4 subsection E regarding economic development. There will be no decisions coming out of this executive session, these executive sessions, so we will adjourn shortly after the executive session has closed. So there's no reason to stay on after this. However, I do want to let everybody know that we will be having our next meeting on Monday, October the 13th, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. So we hope to see you then. But more importantly, we do have the city administrators meet and greet tomorrow night that we want to ensure, make sure that everyone is aware of. So it'll be at the 1301 Tavern at 5:00 o'clock starting, and then it'll go until 7:00 p.m. So we hope that you'll come by. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Sub moved, second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into the executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you all for joining us, and we hope to see you at the next meeting.